Yes, it goes to start video.
No, you know how to get it so my screen shows up okay?
Got three minutes to spare.
I'm just thinking. So Aaron, tonight we'll have to all right tonight and move into the voting member. You're gonna need to produce yourself. That's what I think.
Can we just grab everyone's names before we start this? We have to put it into the minute.
Were you here for the Redbird property, the development down by? Were you here at the last meeting?
I was not. I was in the train.
Chris?
Yeah, W I L B E R.
Do you need our names if we're not speaking? Just for the minute of who was in attendance for the meeting, yeah. Cameron Stein, no. Backer?
Dan McKeel.
Things about your last name?
M C K E.
Hey, can I ask you folks, it's a terrible room for a good sticks. If I turn it off or move up further. Even when those turned off, you can't hear anything in here. The way that works in here is either by hearing or.
So I just see the last two in the background. So I don't know if it's coming on as his new work law. I know the radio's back. Just give him a second. He's trying to.
That looks better. What scenario could you call? Hi, Zach.
Are we on?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you just make sure that that's turned on?
Zach, can you talk to us for a second?
Yeah, just checking to see if you can hear me now.
Yep.
Yeah, there's more of it. It's fine.
Yep, perfect.
All right, I'm gonna try and switch to.
What did you say?
Last check, I promise. Bill, Greg, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good. This will be a little quieter for you. Thanks.
Start the meeting policy order, and I'll ask that those that are willing neighbors can stand to pledge allegiance to you.
All right. As I said, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular Planning Board meeting on Wednesday, June 21st, 2023. Thank you all for coming here. Is there anybody here in the public that has any comments? Is there anything that's not on the agenda that would? Anybody would like to comment on? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make a public comment to the planning board? Okay, I've seen no public comment. We'll move on. There's really two items of business tonight. There's where there's no minutes to approve tonight. We'll look at those at one of our next meetings. There's no new business, so we're gonna get right into old business. And the first item of old business is approval of findings of fact for MSP 23004 identified as Redbird Property down in Pumpkin Town Road. Those findings, the facts were distributed to the board members. And so before I get into that, I just want to make note for the record, Jen, that I'm gonna recognize Aaron Rouse as a member tonight, given our how many people here. And so Aaron, MSP 23004, you would need to refrain from voting on that just because you were not here at the last meeting. Does any board member have any question related to the 23004? That at all, anything? Okay, pretty straightforward. I mean, it was approved last week. This is just really formalizing that. Yeah, now because we are on Zoom tonight, we're gonna be taking a roll call vote for our policy. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the findings of fact for MSP 23004.
So moved. Seconded.
Zach has seconded. Any further conversation from any board member? And again, Aaron, I'll ask that you just abstain from this particular vote. So Bill. Hi, Greg and I and Zach.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that being said, we move on to our review of MSP 22007 Capernaum LLC 406 Main Street, Major Site Plan Amendment and Review. Is it an amendment or just a continued review? Continued review. So by way of background, for those members that are present, Zach, the members here listening in, this came before the board on several different occasions, most recently, I think, back in February. And at that time, you received the application. And there was a whole host of waiver requests at the time. The planning board granted a couple and denied many. And so since that time, we're back tonight to continue our sketch plan review of this particular application. And in my review, I did look at all of the material that was submitted prior to this meeting. And so it would appear at this point that all of those waivers, except for the ones that were previously granted, they have complied and submitted all necessary documentation. And reviewing further documentation, you know, with the planner Hannah, that would appear that the only thing, point of business here tonight is going to be to decide and make a determination on the parking issue associated with this particular application before us. And so is there anything before we kind of continue on with the conversation? Hannah, is there anything that, you know, we need to know since this has been given to us or accurately capture and summarize basically where we are today and anything that we need to know?
Yeah, it's not new from the application that you guys have in front of you, but one thing that I'll note since the last time we saw this application, the applicants did receive a letter of map amendment from Fena in order to change their line of the hundred year floodplain, which effectively removes the majority of the property from the hundred year floodplain and also effectively removes the majority of the property from the resource protection zone. So that does kind of change the review from a shoreline zoning perspective that puts most of the lot in the shoreline and slope zone as far as shoreline zoning is concerned. So that kind of changed a little bit of that, but that was covered in my memo. None of that is new.
We were getting into that.
But other than that, pretty much everything else is pretty straightforward than the last time as well.
Okay, fair enough. At this point, you know, I'd like to point out and now for the record, Aaron, I did recognize you as a voting member. We are gonna ask.
I think there were two.
Yeah, and so can I have a motion to accept the recusal of Aaron from this particular meeting? So move.
Seconded.
Seconded, okay. We'll call a roll call vote. Bill?
I.
Greg?
I. Hi.
Okay, motion passes there. And if I could have you just close your book and move out into the public table. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And so I think, thank you for being here tonight. I've reviewed your application. You have complied with all of those other waiver requests and got us all the necessary information. Good news on some of it because you're out of the resource protection because if you were in the resource protection, it would have just been really hard to pass no according to the zone ordinance. So that's, that's good that you went to that extent. So thank you on that. So I think it really does come down to the parking issue. Again, this is a sketch plan review. In order to proceed to the next level, you would need to have that waiver in place, the preliminary. So depending on what the board wants to do tonight, there's two things. One would be to grant a waiver. And if the waiver is granted, then there would need to be a corresponding motion if the board is in concurrence to find that the application is complete and move it to schedule a public hearing and move it to preliminary review. At which point, the preliminary review, we can discuss conditions and all that kind of stuff. So that's, we don't really need to have that conversation tonight. Can if you want, but you know, you don't need to. So with that being said, the parking, you know, listen, this has been probably one of the bigger hangups. Obviously, I think we're all in agreement on that. And so you're asking for a waiver of 17 spaces. That is a hard number to swallow. I'm just gonna, you know, I thought a lot about this. I looked at the application. And from my perspective, I think I'm gonna ask the board, we haven't really addressed the issue of the onsite parking fully as it pertains to the trailer that was brought in, because I do know, I've been there a couple times myself in the past, that there used to be onsite parking. And so I want to have a conversation about that as we proceed to discussion on the on the whether or not we're gonna issue a waiver and if so, how much? So where you guys want to start?
Well, just the main question that I had kind of along lines of what you had mentioned there is the cost of every clean some of those spots and onsite spots and lessening the blow on street parking, I guess. So like to what extent those have been kind of taken over, taken over by other aspects of the property. I don't really know. I don't know what it took before and I haven't.
Yeah, well, I mean, there are pictures in here.
Yeah, I was looking back through some to try to get an idea of that a bit.
Sam, do you know how much parking was there?
I heard from one to four.
So there's really. From a standpoint of what was fully compliant with the code, which prescribes that parking must comply with some architectural graphical standards.
Works and dimensions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure exactly what was there previously comprised of that. I know there's another section of the ordinance and I'm sorry, I don't have it off my head just related to like being able to turn around and stuff when you enter a parking lot. And in our opinion, those, all of those with what we have there and what was there previously, it sort of wouldn't be have been a compliant parking lot, so to speak.
So. Yeah, go let's. We can explore that more. I understand what you're saying. But, but I think we're coming to a conclusion. We don't have the graphical depictions for the turnarounds and is what you're saying, correct? We don't have any of that information. That going the turnaround space pulling in.
From those, from those standards, I have the, I don't.
You don't. Okay, that's fine. Okay, so you don't have another doing. Okay. Now Jenny, within the ordinance itself, it does prescribe the size of a parking space, correct?
Yeah, it should. Just to let you know, that's no rule is trying to ask you something.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. I just, what do we have right now? I, I know you asked Greg the question, but can we be clear about what is there right now? And how does that relate to the 17 parking spots request?
Yeah, Zach, I don't think we're getting a clear answer, and that's not negative towards the applicant. I think we don't have the, you know, I've heard like between one and four. Obviously, it's more than one. Is it four? I don't know. But there are standards within our ordinance that dictate the size of a parking space. So I think we won't know until you get out there and actually measure if it's gonna be three or four, you know, three and a half, three and a half to get three. You know what I'm saying? So we don't have a clear understanding of what actually is there yet.
Okay.
No, that's all right. If I may continue, I think one of our points of not sort of seeing those as parking spots as well is just from a safety standpoint of fact that anyone pulling into those or pulling out back into the road, they're crossing the sidewalk with their vehicle as well as backing into an active road. Yeah, and parking on the street in a parallel manner to us seems just a safer option. Yeah, that was good.
I also think for people that aren't doing, who haven't seen the parking study, I think it would be beneficial to refer, when you read the results of what we found and how many available vacant space, the vacant spots around on the street within a 600 foot radius.
Yeah, I think it was 61.
Sure, yeah.
Something like that.
On our peak hours, maybe about 12 were utilized. So I think the engineering was something that if we were even to ask for double the amount of parking spots, it really would have an impact that. Before we talk about the spots that are on the properties, since a lot of the buildings on Lower Main Street and Upper Main Street are actually right up the front of the street where this lot just happens to actually have space for parking.
That understood. Yeah, I'm not dismissing that again. Like I said, I read it and I think it was 61. And I did read the conclusion about the doubling goal. I get it. That's all well and good. We still have the issue of the ordinances and what the ordinances say and how we have to interpret those. Okay? So it really does come down to how much can we waive? What can we do? What can we think is reasonable? In the sense of not dismissing your statement about whether it's safe or not. I'm not in a position to say what I believe to be a safer egress from the site while they're backing out. It's more of an unsafe. It happens there all the time now with the with the driveways that are there. Has the fire chief and police chief waived in on this at this point in time? I mean, we can address that unless there's any non-starters that you might not be aware of in another level review.
You should be receiving letters from them. They have the new application.
Right.
Nick Ham will send something back about the fence, but nothing about parking.
What did he say?
Well, we asked him to write it in letter form. We just received it like this afternoon. He just basically said that he's concerned with this real fence, but he's gonna send that in a letter and that can be addressed there. I mean, like those.
Yeah, that would ultimately be a condition.
But here, so here's, here's what this is what the ordinance says, 14024, off-street parking. And it says, and I can do it.
Were you talking about the onsite to the side of the building about what it?
No, I was gonna speak to their point about backing out because it actually spells it out here. Let me just go to it because it's on my phone, so it's super little. It says parking speeds related in accordance with architectural graphic standards, a petition, parking areas will be so arranged that it is unnecessary for vehicles to back into the street. So I guess what they're saying is if unsafe, then the ordinance says the same thing. So the ordinance is backing what they're saying about it. But I don't see, I don't have a full ordinance in front of me and I don't see anything about size restriction on parking spaces.
Well, it's like eight and a half by 16 or, you know.
Right, but it's not like specified. That's what I'm saying. Unless it's in a different spot, I don't see it.
Quick clarification on that part of the back end of the street. So what that is saying is those wouldn't be considered available space for parking because they would have to back on the street. So you wouldn't be able to utilize it as a parking spot. That accurate.
Well, you're talking, you're comparing residential to commercial, right? So it's okay for residential, you know, spaces to be back on the street. That's normal. But commercial, you know?
Yep, so that, it sounds to me like it's this wouldn't be considered a parking lot or available for parking spaces as a parking lot for a commercial business because you wouldn't be able to turn around and pull forward into the street.
Right, so you could design it so that you didn't have to do that. Yeah, but yeah.
Okay.
That's essentially saying if you're designing any parking lot, you don't do it so that you have to back. I'm assuming that the, the reference to the sizes are specifically in that reference of the architectural graphical standards, which they don't include a copy of it.
Yeah, I mean, that's not critical.
Yeah.
Where this conversation is really for, is it three, is it four, is it two, you know? You know, you can get a lot in your car, there's no lungs. Okay. Zach, any thoughts? I don't want to leave you out.
You can hear me now, right? I, I guess, reading this and the application right now, it looks, my understanding is they're asking for a full, all of the parking to be handled by the street and all of their existing parking to be used or not provided as parking. That might seem like a bit harder to swallow, especially if, you know, thank you folks who want to be good stewards to the community in town. There's a way we can find in between that might be better. Rather than the rest of the street is going to absorb all of the parking for your customers.
Thank you, thank you, Zach. 14 and 19, I think. Or 12.
Later, later on. Interesting.
I mean, it looks like there's space from this one on 12. It looks like there's space to, as described, pull in, but not turn around. You're gonna have to back out. Or what's happening there in the past though? What did we do in the past? We have any idea for what the fire board did? Any idea on your end, Sam?
Sorry?
Do you have any idea about a prior approval for parking? I mean, there was parking there.
I, I do not know.
Okay.
I'm not even sure if this property has ever been through. Any site plan review. There is, there is one mention of parking spot dimension. I don't know where it is. I know it's in the suburb ordinance.
Again, we don't, we don't need that. And I'm just looking at the ordinance here, so.
Yeah, reference.
No, what, yeah, all I'm getting at is how many spaces could realistically?
Yeah.
Get there. You know, subtract that from the waiver. But I want to see the.
Question.
What part was that Jenny?
It was 14024 is where I was reading down.
The question that I would have is, can we, even if there's space within, can we consider them parking, legit parking spaces for commercial going toward their total amount of patrons allowed or not? And if we can't, then it's an all or nothing waiver versus, I think we're all. I think we're talking about whether we, if there's four slots, we improve it with 13 and they would have to provide four slots on site or
Right.
You know, three and 14 or whatever. But we are not able to consider those inertial business as parking spots and that kind of, it's an all or nothing thing at that point.
Can I just ask your hesitation? After the, the study came back and said if we were to ask for double, it would hardly impact the street. Like what? I'm just, I guess I'm just sort of curious on where the the concern is coming from since we had the parking study done. Yeah, wondering where, where this is coming from, I guess.
Well, the issue, again, I'm not dismissing what your parking study suggested.
Okay.
The issue is, what do the ordinances allow? What do the ordinances, what are the parameters those set up? And so there on one hand, doubling it, as suggested, is wonderful. But that's really more commentary, right? In terms of what that means in terms of our interpretation of the ordinance and what we can and can't do. We all understand, we've been in prior meetings that said, yes, we have the ability to waive. Okay. Yeah, some type of a waiver where I'm headed, some type of a waiver, to what extent is in order? And we're discussing what extent now. And so honestly, prior to this meeting, I was thinking, I wanted to look at that and understand how many spaces were there. And if there's three or if there's four, we'll grant a waiver for 13 or 14. And then that would be that.
I guess one other hesitation that comes up that I've got the ordinance in digital form on in my mind, but one thing that comes to my mind as well is loading, you know, it, it, one loading truck maybe have more difficulty to get into a typical side parallel parking space than your typical car. So if you're gonna be loading on and off materials for your restaurant for services, that's going to impact traffic flow. But that part of the flow, I don't recall, but that's one thing that at least comes to my mind. That's going to impact traffic flow, but that part of the flow, I don't recall, but that's one thing that at least comes to my mind.
Yeah, and if they use the existing parking area there now that. They're gonna be, at the end of the day, people are gonna be pulling in, you know, I mean, that's gonna happen. Loading trucks, that kind of stuff, so it's gonna be happening, that backing out into traffic anyway. And I I understand your point.
We would anticipate, I think, the loading trucks to pull up. Parallels, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, our our curb cut's about forty feet.
Yeah. Uh, there's a, a photo, like a previous photo from the building with mobile homes still there, um, in the NERPA permit application. And it looks like there is pavement going on to the site further, so they may have parked further into the site. Yeah, there's double parking, uh, one spot that is double parking, yeah, so. Most likely where that parking was rather than right along the road. Where we're looking.
So every storage container is like on that side?
Yeah, like past where the fence is now, inside there.
Yeah. Jenny, where did you see the, uh?
It's one forty.
Yeah.
Twenty four feet. Just probably standard phone, because. Sorry.
Hey Zach, are you able to get there on your thing, one twenty, uh, one forty twenty four B?
Yeah, uh, I was looking at F just a moment ago, but B is in Bob.
Yeah.
Can they, I guess you can't put a sign to say that we'd back into the parking spot, then you wouldn't have to back into the street, generally, I find that to be the safer method in most places.
I I like the idea of having part, some parking on on site, but it doesn't sound to me like that's. Feasible or even possible with the ordinance, so.
Here's the dangerous part about that, if I can, that's your chair, and I think the applicants would probably be able to speak to this a little bit better. I don't know if they've been in conversations with their insurance company on this, but if you guys make these two applicants find parking on site, it becomes a life safety issue. So if you move that storage container, follow me here, and you put parking spot there. And a car accidentally drives down, there's people down there, there's outside seating, people are sitting there, I mean, that'd be, I. That becomes a little dangerous, I think. So to make them have parking on site, even though there's not a lot of room there, just doesn't seem feasible at all.
Yeah.
But the applicants can speak to that better, probably. But I would be interested to know if they've had conversations with their insurance company about it, because that would be a, a big issue, you know? We've all seen cars pull into a store and hit it, you know?
Back and over sidewalk, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's. Somewhere over there. Um. Go ahead.
Um. Commissioned the traffic standards for product full time and follow the recommendations, so I don't know. You know, fighting, fighting against it, on this.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, we can motion to be, accept a waiver for seventy parking spots.
Then move. I'm gonna go ahead and second that one, uh, and so, uh, been moved and seconded. In reviewing that section of the ordinance, I'm not really sure that we could even meet that as well. Um, I'm not so sure, we're really left with a lot of options at this point. What do you think, Zach?
Uh, you know, given, given what was, uh, pointed out in terms of. Uh, the section B, I I would tend to agree.
Okay, fair enough, uh, all in favor? Zach, uh, Bill?
I.
Uh, Greg?
I.
I.
Okay, should pass this for a waiver, uh, and so from here, can I have a motion to accept the application as a plea?
No move.
The move seconded, any further conversation by the board?
No.
Okay, uh, Bill?
I.
Greg?
I.
I.
Okay, great, so next motion, schedule a public hearing for. July nineteenth. Uh, and a sidewalk as well. That's a busy.
Public hearing July nineteenth at what time?
Yeah.
Seven?
Gonna have to decide, yeah.
Seven, yeah.
Yeah. Is there a motion to set a public hearing?
Keep in conjunction with that?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be a couple.
You guys can decide. Yeah.
Yeah. I do want to do a sidewalk before, uh, we're gonna do the public, we're gonna do preliminary application that night, too? Yeah.
Could do a sidewalk, like, I know we're not gonna have a meeting, but, you know, a couple weeks prior, and, uh, everybody wanna do, how about eight o'clock in the morning?
Everybody available even earlier than that?
Which day?
Uh, B the seventeenth, let's keep it all on the same day.
Seventeenth?
Whatever in July is, whatever.
The nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Oh, it's the nineteenth, I'm sorry, uh, the public hearing should be on the nineteenth.
Yeah, we have asked.
Okay, I don't know if I said the seventeen.
At eight AM on the seventeenth.
On the nineteenth, the same day, that Wednesday.
The nineteenth at seven or eight AM, are you saying?
Well, I'd like to do it before the meeting.
Can you guys do eight AM? Yeah, we can do whenever, we can even do earlier. Than that, like. July fifth meeting.
Yeah.
You can't schedule like.
Nineteenth is gonna be, the nineteenth is gonna be real cram, uh, so.
Would you be open to scheduling a special meeting?
Too many vacations going on right now, we we gotta try to reschedule things already.
Sure, we just want to take advantage of the warm months.
Understood. Zach, would you be available on the nineteenth early in the morning?
Um, earlier is better, I have, um. Rather important meeting at nine that I'd have to be absolutely be ready for, so eight thirty is kind of a drop dead.
What time do you need to be out of there?
Uh, eight thirty, drop dead.
All right, wanna do seven thirty?
That would work.
Seven thirty on the nineteenth for the sidewalk, okay.
And it just motion all this for the.
Yeah. I'm getting it just trying to write it down before I end up forgetting. So, uh, is there a motion to, uh, have a, uh, sidewalk, uh, in the July nineteenth at seven thirty AM? So move, could move, I'll second that. Okay, great, uh, any conversation? Uh, Bill?
I.
Greg?
I.
I.
Okay, thank you, Zach, uh, that's been set for the nineteenth, uh, do we have a motion to set a public hearing for, is it gonna be seven o'clock, or what else we doing that night, don't we have another one?
Okay, so.
We got a lot, we got a lot.
Let's talk about the nineteenth real quick, uh, seven o'clock probably is the best, and depending on.
Same though. There'll be a tap house.
So I would say that we would set up the agenda for, um, Kepner LLC, public hearing. And deal with them in old business as well, we have, we have, um. So we have. Sameville, we have Kepner LLC, and we have, um, LE two thousand three on the agenda that night, those are all three, right?
Yeah.
So if you set them up, I would set them up.
I set them up in order to take care of them, so again. You know, I want to kind of reiterate here, uh, okay, we'll do a public hearing for seven, is there a motion for seven o'clock? On the nineteenth for the public hearing.
So move.
Move, I'll second it, uh, any conversation? Hey, Bill?
I.
Greg?
I.
I.
Zach? Uh, okay, so that's fine, okay, so you're clear to move to preliminary application, public hearing on the nineteenth. Uh, that's when we're gonna have to talk about some conditions, okay, so you cleared all the initial hurdles on that. Uh, there are some conditions that I think we're gonna have to address. Items that are gonna need to be really clarified in here, uh, one is, uh, in my review. When I review that, the whole concept, uh, restaurant versus takeout, there's a little bit of a shrinky area there, uh, in terms of. Uh, what you're looking to do, because. I think some of the the voluminous documentation is, are we using words interchangeably, are they one in the same, or are they actually different? But we want to talk more about, uh. I do, uh, anyway, about, uh, restaurant versus takeout, want to talk about, uh, noise limitations, I mean, you are gonna be out in a. It is a business district, it's just residential, uh, but hours of operation, noise limits, uh.
You know the noise ordinance and stuff, right?
What's that?
You know the noise ordinance and stuff.
I do know we have one, I'm pretty sure we do have one, I have not looked at it for purposes of this conversation tonight. Uh, more concerning, uh, in terms of the noise ordinance, uh, is the nature of the business being out there, is it in a residential area, uh, in terms of. Uh, quieting down at a certain hour, uh, if you intend to have live music out there, you know, what do we think is reasonable and how late would that go? Uh, I think, I think are things we're gonna want to talk about, um. We're gonna need to, I do have a few concerns, having, uh, children of my own visually seeing it drive by, split rail fence. Uh, that's part of the little concern on my side, uh, of what they're proposing for a split rail fence for that, pretty Stephen Bangman. Maybe it's a three rail fence, there's something different, uh, you know, there are other, other options, but I also want to know. You know, what, what the chief is thinking about the faster, uh, again, I'm not saying it's not gonna work, as one have a conversation. Um, litter, litter control, uh, the the basic things, you know, like that.
Is that part of the planning board, that's part of the planning?
Yeah, conditions, we can talk about conditions that we place on the permit, yeah. And so landscaping, I see you have this here, um. I think a lot of this will, will give us a better idea when we get out there for a sidewalk, what, if anything else, we want to see differently for landscaping. Uh, cause I do know, based on some of the photos in here, kind of that, right behind the structure there, there's that pool right there. Not saying we're gonna do it, but it's a gorgeous vision, and we're not talking about it, uh, in terms of fully moving forward with it, but maybe some additional landscaping there to shield that. Uh, again, I haven't been there on site to see, maybe it's already there, I don't know. Um, so I think there's plenty of opportunity to. Have some further conversations, but then. Cleared all the initial hurdles in the applications, please, we'll see on the nineteenth.
Yeah, just very full, um, about the agenda going forward, before you adjourn, um, so it makes more sense to do the public hearing, and then an old business captured Kepnera before Samuel. Cause it will be lengthy, and we'll see where we are, I just wanted to tell you.
Like we did in the, some of the prior, we'll take it after, but if you have it there listed on the agenda, and that order makes it ultimately clear how we're gonna go through the meeting.
Yeah, cause I just think that same goes more, will be so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Perfect. Yeah.
All right.
I I just wanted to thank Zach for zooming in, I know, uh. Yes, that would be necessary for application, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, is there any public comments? Here in the audience? Is there any additional public comment on Zoom? Okay, uh, seeing no public comment, sure, yes.
I was just curious, something, meeting on the nineteenth, that's a public hearing that is run by you?
Yes.
Of the town council.
Uh, me, the the planning board, it's a, uh, a planning board public hearing for purposes of, uh, ordinance requirements.
Okay, so that's different from tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
There's, it's a multi-step process, uh, with the planning board, and we have a sketch plan review, depending on what type of permit application they're submitting. This one happens to require a sketch plan, and if we find the application complete, and we approve the sketch plan, then we're required to conduct a public hearing. And, uh, also move it to preliminary plan review.
What is the next step?
Uh, the next step would be if we find preliminary, preliminary plan complete, which is where we would talk about any waivers, any other things that might come up. Uh, and then. The hope would be those would be incorporated, and then, uh, those would then go to a final plan review. And then at the final plan review, we basically find that everything is in order, everything's been incorporated, and then we put it forward for a vote. And then they'd be granted a land use permit for that, then they could go obtain a golden permit.
Okay.
So you're talking, uh. If everything goes off well, are we talking the middle to end of August? Just based on timing?
I do have one more question about, uh, you mentioned the preliminary versus final, and. From what, what I've read, one four, one twenty one requires for subdivisions, the preliminary and the final, but one forty only goes from sketch plan to final, from what I remember.
You might be right, yeah, see, we're dealing with the. The subdivisions right now. Yeah, is he correct, he might be correct on that one.
It's, yes, so the, I also don't think it's required for public hearing. I mean, I'm fine with it, but I don't think that's a requirement.
I would defer to Jenny and Jan on that.
So. So submit the sketch plan, um, and then the planning board has a sketch plan discussion, and then it says, following the sketch plan discussion, it doesn't specify whether or not the board has to officially approve the sketch plan in this sense, the same way you need to do with the subdivision.
Right.
Uh, then the applicant submits the full formal application, which this essentially was, um, and then we, how we view, the board finds it complete, um, and then. After you find it complete, you schedule a public hearing. After a public hearing, you do the approvals.
So will propose tonight, legit, isn't it?
Yes, but this, the ordinance essentially lays out that at their next.
Yeah.
Uh.
It's a full.
Meeting. If there isn't anything that needs to be changed as a result of the public hearing or the sidewalk, they are able to receive their final approval, if everything else.
Okay. So, but the opportunity is still there to discuss additional condition.
Yes.
Though it's not required that it be approved, so you're right, uh, which is fine, so we did do the public hearing until we have full review.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that up, we're so used to subdivisions.
Yeah, so as long as there's no, uh, adjustments required after the nineteenth meeting, there should be all set.
Uh, one could go, go to that conclusion, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so you might want to be giving some consideration right now.
Yeah.
To conditions, uh. If you're having live bands, what are you thinking, and how does that comport with the noise ordinance? Uh.
We actually don't play with noise ordinance and stuff for, yeah, only in the industrial, in industrial now.
And so we may want to place limitations on that, uh, given the nature of what else is going on over there, residential area, and say, hey, by nine o'clock. Live band need to, you know, go away, do you have any intent of having, uh, fire pits out there, typically in bar yards, you know, there's fire pits. Um, when would those be put out, are they gonna be wood, or are they going to be propane? Uh, so, uh, those are issues that I, I think you, you want to let us know what you're thinking. Uh, so we can determine whether or not we say yes or no automatically to any of those.
Of course, yeah, and any, any of those questions, we're definitely prepared to, uh, address, and I appreciate that, the list of a few items.
Yeah, and so, you know, we do need to decide or understand this fence issue, we'll hear from the fire chief, that'll be shared with you.
Yeah.
Um, again, a restaurant, you know, uh, to be clear, it has to be a, uh, table, I believe table service is correct, the definition cannot be takeout.
Yeah.
I, I think that would have been the memo, yeah.
And one of, yeah, and one of, one of the prior drawings or whatever you had here, uh, and maybe I didn't notice it right here, I had like a takeout window.
Yeah, yeah, we, we under, we understand the, uh. The distinguishment between the two and.
Yeah.
Our part of our, in addition to answering all those waivers, was to.
Yeah.
You know, uh, hopefully clear up some of that confusion, definitely.
We understand that takeout, not a lot.
So, you know, presumably, if it take, you know, the public hearing at the next meeting, in discussion of the full plan review. You know, if we can't get out of the way any additional conditions, then you may have to come back for an additional meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, so are there any other thoughts that the board members have to let them start thinking about at this point in time? Uh, fencing, um, of, uh, fencing, uh, clarification, restaurant v takeout, which I'm hearing it here.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to see that in writing.
Fire pit.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Fire pits and, and. Yeah, I, given that you're near a natural area and a ravine, uh, making sure that litter does not get escape into the nearby stream.
Uh, can you say that again?
And he might be able to address that.
I think you said litter down the stream.
Yeah, litter, litter control from getting into the stream, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we have, we have, uh, good ideas to alleviate that concern related to the fact that it is a split rail and there's some potential there and. We, we have no intention of fire pits, just knock that one right out of the way.
So there would be a condition. Uh, I'm, I'm willing to entertain public comment, and if you have something to say, go ahead.
I just had a question.
Yeah.
As far as I know, because of the whole fireworks issue, there is no, um, noise ordinance in town. So how would you arbitrarily decide? Who can have a band or whatnot?
Yeah, we can place conditions on the permit, that's allowed.
Based on, yeah.
Uh, what we think is reasonable within the neighborhood. I'm not saying no, I want to have a full understanding.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I want to have a full understanding as to what's going on there. Because the flip side to that argument would be, oh, the planning board approves it, and then the phone calls start happening, uh, the following day. When a band was down there until nine thirty, well, nothing you can do now to plan for approve that. So we can, you know, make, uh, conditions of, of use. Uh, there which are allowed, and I think what we're talking about is doing things that are reasonable. Uh, you know, again, recognizing, you know, it is lower v. street, that is a lot of residential area down there, but it's also a business use. And so you gotta balance that, that's what zoning is, you know? So we'll try to come up with something that we think is reasonable, maybe the rest of the board won't do it, I don't, I'm trying to give you. Things to think about, you know, um. So fire pits, you said no, so that's fine. Are there any, uh, uh, conditions, uh, Hannah? That you could think of off the top of your head? I mean, all the other permits have been submitted, so there's, we don't need to do any conditioning on that. You know?
Um. The only thing, and I guess we may get into this more next time, um, there is a little bit of question. Understandably so about what constitutes a structure, um, and where that within, uh, related to the twenty-five foot shoreline setback. Um, and what they can put within that or not, so that may end up being a condition once we.
Yeah, it would be great if you could stake out for us actually the whole twenty-five foot shoreline zones, where we go out there, we don't have to say, hey, what's this?
Oh.
We could just know, here's where the setbacks are. Uh, Jenny, on a code enforcement side, any initial thought on what? Condition we might want to see, if any?
I mean, just from our side, it's like building permits after approval, um, I would, I would wait to see what the fire chief actual letter says, um. Not really anything more, um.
Okay.
Their menu and all the food that they're gonna have on site is captured with the health inspector, that's not with us. Um.
It's just the issue of restaurant sit, sit in versus table service versus takeout. And again, I just see, not, not disputing what they say, but it's been a little bit of conflicting information, not necessarily intentional, but. You know, when it says takeout, one, you can see why we're thinking takeout. Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't think so, and they've said here they're not doing that, so.
Yeah, are there any things that you just want them to start thinking about?
No, I'm not about to be on with.
Is there a connection? Okay. So more may come up, but I think you got a good list, just things to be thinking about when we, uh, opened up next week or the nineteenth.
Next week sounds good.
Yeah. Uh, Zach, any, um. Further conversation or thought?
I don't have any others at this time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's, we are at member comments at this point. And so are there any other comments from members of the board? Zach, well, I'm good.
Emotionally adjourned?
Seconded that, uh. And moved and seconded, all in favor, Bill?
I.
Greg, I?
I.
Great, thank you very much. Meeting is over.